Meeting is called to order. We're meeting in the central jury room of the Hood County Justice Center at 1200 West Pearl Street, Granbury, Texas. And the first item is the invocation and then the pledge. Would you all please stand?
Let us pray. Our Father and our God, we come this morning giving you all praises and thanking you, Father. Thank you for the blessings that you have given us. Father, we thank you for the peace that we have here in Hood County. We thank you for the people that we have in place that are doing things for the betterment of all of us and not for just certain individuals. Father, we just want to thank you for Hood County and the city of Granbury. Father, we ask that you continue to bless us in this new year as you did in this past year. Father, we ask these blessings in the mighty name of Jesus. Amen.
Y'all join me in the pledge of allegiance to this great nation?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please join me in the pledge to Texas.
On the Texas flag, I pledge allegiance to Texas, one state under God, one indivisible.
Thank you all very much. Bob, we have special presentations this morning? Does any -- I know we already have some people, forms to fill out to speak. If anyone would like to address the Commissioners' Court on any agenda item, would you please raise your hand? The sheriff has forms for you to fill out. Seeing none, we'll move on. I'm going to move item nine on the miscellaneous up to front. Danny Tugle has got an item he wants to discuss, and he's got court down at the courthouse at 9:30, so he has to be moved up so he could get his business done.
Thank you, Judge. Commissioners, I appreciate the opportunity to come here today. What I've got is just a application to the court to hire a new person in my office. I've had, recently had one leave employment, moved to another office as a newly-elected official, and I'm promoting one person in the office to take her place, his replacement. And what I'm asking the court is to start these people out at this pay scale, and after 90 days, move them up one level in their pay scale.
The reason he came to, a court judge, is he's asking, because of the policy change that we've made, they do fit the CS5 level, the CS3 level that the two existing employees that left were on when they left, but he's asking them to go above the normal bring-in date, so, because they have experience. So that's why he's asking to come be on the agenda in 90 days. He wants to bump them. He's checked with the auditor and the treasurer to make sure he has money in his budget. They both have the same copies we have. I make a motion to approve.
I've got one question. When will this take effect?
As soon as possible. I've already, they're working right now.
Okay.
They went to work, I guess, at that pay scale on the first of this last week.
Then I'll ask a question of the treasurer. Can it ratify back, or can you go forward?
No, we cannot ratify it back. We can only, first --
That's fine.
I believe Bob and Mary covered what they're, what they're at, at seven to fifth. I think that's what he asked.
Yeah.
So my motion would be then that we allow this to go forward as of the fifth, then?
Second. Motion made by Commissioner Barry, second by Commissioner Dever. Any further discussion? And all in favor? Aye. Opposed? Motion carried.
Appreciate, thank you very much.
We're going to get you back in time, Danny.
Good work.
There you go. All right. Next item is a consent agenda. Does any Commissioner wish to pull any item off of the consent agenda? Hearing nine, I'll accept a motion to approve.
Come on over.
Motion made by Commissioner Taut. Do you have a second?
Second.
Seconded by Commissioner Dever. By the way, Butch Barton, who is normally sitting here, has got a school required by the state of Texas for new Commissioners and judges, so he's in Austin warming a seat down there, so.
Discussion, Judge.
Pardon?
Discussion, please.
Any discussion?
Item D.
D?
Item D. Once again, the way Church has donated $750 to the county, just as they do the other municipalities, this is done by their congregation. I'd like for that to be earmarked for the Employee Benefit Fund, so that we, the money doesn't go to the general fund. It goes to be used for the employees, either through Healthy County or whatever HR and Human Resources deems possible. That way, it doesn't get bogged down in general budget.
Okay. The motion to approve the consent agenda on item D. Commissioner Barry would, in his motion, want, no.
We just direct this auditor to put it in that budget.
Okay. Anyway, to the Employee Benefit Fund. Any further discussion? All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Motion carried. Next item on the agenda is subdivision roads and plats.
Morning, Judge Cochran. Commissioners, we have a public hearing for a site development plan on the 5K shooting range. The property is approximately 12.8 acres in size in the rural district in Precinct One. Some time ago, Commissioner Precinct One and the sheriff and myself went to look at the site and visit the property owners and the proposed development they were looking at. Last Wednesday, we had a staff meeting looking at the laws. We've realized that the county doesn't have a whole lot of authority in regulating a shooting range. However, this has been pulled in because of the public, in fact, to be using the septic, the existing OSSF on the property. At this time, the environmental director said that after looking at it, it was a very minor change that was going to have to be made to the modification of the system. Actually, I think it's either one or two more spray heads that were going to have to be installed, that the tanks were large enough to handle the capacity. However, talking to him this morning, he has not received that design from the designer.
Okay.
Like I said, it's a very minor change. However, like I said, the director has not received that design as of yet.
Rod, you have any comments on this as far as your visitation out there and looking at it?
You want my comment?
Yes.
Judge Commissioners, under the laws of Texas, there isn't anything that would stop this moving forward. There's been a couple of things brought to our attention. As you know, with, people have talked about the size of the area that he's going to put the gun range on. Texas has passed a deal that has to be adopted by the counties, each county, that it can hold it down 10 acres or under, that they can control shooting on those. But in this case, it's bigger than that, so that can't be messed with, and I prefer not to go there with that particular law. The noise question has been brought up. The design that he brought forward to us when we went out there to look at it, I believe that he's going to do everything possible with his design, with the berms as tall as they're going to be and the design of that. I think the noise, lot should be absorbed or go up, and he wants to, in the future, add vegetation around there. That would help in that respect. No doubt, if he gets a full house out there for every lane that he's going to have available to shoot, it could be noisy, but he has addressed the times. It wasn't going to start real early, wasn't going to go late, so he's working with us, and I believe he's planning out a good shooting range. So I don't have any problems with it or any issues at all with it, and there's nothing legal that we could do with it.
One question I want to ask you, Roger. As far as the noise level, I know it's not a Commissioners' Court issue, but it would be a sheriff's issue if there was a noise to put that level up.
Yeah. Yeah, it'd be a, it'd go through, it'd be a ticket if it was deemed that it was above. I think, off the top of my head, it's 98 decibels. That's a continuous sound, so I'd need to talk with the county attorney to see what she would think on this. I guess we just have to cross that bridge when we come to it, if we come to it. We've had some issues with, like Wolf Hollow Plan, when they were building it, when it was a continual sound, high decibels, that when they were flushing out the lines, it was nonstop. This would be more intermittent, but it still could be a nuisance, so I guess we'd cross that bridge when we come to it, and yes, I'd be the one that would be dealing with it.
Safety issues, too?
I don't think, if he sticks to his plan with the berms, the size that they're going to be, and the design, where you're going to be shooting from, I don't think there's going to be any, any safety issues.
Okay.
It's pretty well thought out, and he's looked at a lot of different designs and come up with the best plan out of all of them.
Okay. We have three people that would like to speak on that. Are they have submitted a form? Betty Ashlock, would you like to address the Commissioners' Court? Or you just, come on up?
I live over on Wilkerson Court, which the gun range will be facing my son, my grandson, and my house. We're all concerned about the safety of this, and we're mostly concerned about the noise factor. They've had guns shooting there already, and it is quite loud, and I'm afraid that with more people, seven days a week is not going to be a very pleasant place to live. We're also concerned about our property values going down, and we're, I've talked to several of my neighbors, and none of us are wanting this shooting range at all. We came here for peace and quiet, and that is not it.
Okay. Thank you very much. Next one is Joseph Sweeney.
Thank you. Good morning. My name's Joseph Sweeney, and I am a resident, along with my wife, of over 12 years, at 5807 Shaw Road, which is about three properties removed from the proposed site. I would, I would second everything Ms. Ashcroft said right before me. A couple, couple of things to take note for the, for the court and the Commissioners. We've been made aware that there is no legal authority or statutes in the way of this, but it, a couple of the things that are concerning to myself, my family, and several residents that I've talked to are these. Number one, this is a residential area. While it falls just outside of the statute of the 10 acres, the area that we're talking about here, where the shooting range is proposed, is within and surrounded by residences, be they acreage residences, and yes, shooting does go on in this area that we all understand and tolerate and, and live with year to year. It is very sporadic, it is very intermittent. It is nothing like the six-day-a-week, all-day-long operation that, if successful, will grow into a business that will be, I'm quite certain, fully, fully accommodated at the site. So the concern, first of all, has to be safety, and I would respect Sheriff Deed's comments that there should be no safety concerns beyond the human element that's always there, but very, very closely behind that is the noise consideration, and it's, to be termed, just a nuisance is really understating it by a lot to the residents of the area. It's not a nuisance, it will be a total change of the way of life and a total change of the life that most people live in that area for. And, and after that, you know, coupled with the property value destruction that we've already seen in Hood County because of various factors with the drought and the lake and everything else, this is a smaller area, but be no doubt, I've already talked with several realtors about, about the effects of something like this, and to those of us who live in this area, with very short notice, our property values will, will very definitely decline. So I just urge the court and the Commissioners to, to give us some time. Most of us just found out about this within the last month, and it's been sort of a shock and something to come to terms with, so I urge the court and Commissioners to at least give it, give it some very serious consideration as far as what it's doing to the majority of the population out there to put a business so different as this into there. Thank you.
Thank you.
Yes, I'm Gary Kirkandall, owner of 5K Firearms, and I'm proposing, one proposing to put in this, this range. I want to emphasize to the court that safety is my number-one concern. I've been a federally licensed firearms dealer for 26 years, former law enforcement officer. I'm a certified armor for Beretta, Glock, Colt, and Smith &amp; Wesson. Me and my daughter promote gun shows all across Texas. About 26 years experience, professional experience in firearms. I've never had a firearms-related incident or accident, so safety is my number-one concern. As far as the noise, we're proposing 20 to 22-foot backstops. The industry standard is 15 foot. For exterior berms on the side, the industry standard is eight foot. I'm proposing 10 to 12 foot. We're going to have bullet baffles and barrel baffles. That's going to absorb a lot of the noise also. So we've also found some vegetation that we can plant, Arizona cypress. They grow to 25 feet tall, 12 to 15 feet wide. What I'm proposing is planting those in rows around this range site, and I think that, and it's, they're not a real fast-growing tree, but you know, they're standing up to three feet a year. So I think if I plant these, that will absorb a lot of that noise also. But the way we've got this range designed with the barrel baffles, when someone is on that shooting range, shooting at the rifle range, there's going to be no way that their bullet can go over that berm, because there's going to be a baffle there to prohibit that barrel from raising up. So if they raise their barrel up all the way, they're still going to strike that backstop. On the pistol range, we're going to have bullet baffles. It's a series of wooden devices going this way, same effect. If you, if someone was to raise their barrel up, they're going to strike that baffle. That way, they cannot shoot over that backstop. And those, those devices are all wooden. Wood absorbs a lot of this noise. We've looked at the construction underneath the benches itself. Our first inclination was to go with concrete, but looking at a lot of other ranges, concrete just, you know, it bounces that noise up, up and away. So we've looked at another method. It's going to be more maintenance involved, but that's using decomposed granite. Decomposed granite will absorb a lot of that noise also. And then a lot of our benches are going to be made out of wood instead of concrete. That's going to absorb some of that noise. So we've taken the noise factor into consideration, because I knew it would be an issue. So we're trying to do everything that we can to suppress this noise level as much as possible.
Have you, have you, is there anybody else that has gone to this extent? And do you have any, like, empirical knowledge of this from another source, you know, another gun range or anything?
I've visited several ranges over the last couple of years, and being in my, you know, business that I'm in and being in former law enforcement, I've been to a lot of ranges. Basically, I patterned this after the Halton City Public Gun Range, which is inside the incorporated city limits of Halton City, the Fort Worth Police Gun Range, which is inside the incorporated city limits of Fort Worth, and then also the largest shooting range in North America, which is the NRA Whittington Center in Ricon, New Mexico. I've incorporated, I've looked at the aspects that each one of these ranges have and adopted them into my design plan, taking, you know, the best of each one of them, and you know, what's physically and financially, you know, capable of me doing, I'm, I'm looking at doing.
Gary, I got a couple of questions for you. My phone rang off the wall all day long yesterday, and
Yes, sir.
That's my job to be there for the, for the citizens. You're aware, you've got a lot of opposition out there with your neighbors.
Yes, sir. That, that's understandable.
That's the reason I decided to go this route, to make it open and for everybody to know what's going on. I think we kind of explained it. At the court level, we have no jurisdiction over your gun range, it's at the state level.
Yes, sir.
Couple of questions come up, I think it's been addressed, the noise level, the safety issue. What about insurance?
There will be insurance. It will be insurance policy written through the NRA Shooting Range Program. In my understanding, it's real, real similar to the insurance that we carry for the gun shows that we promote. It's all carried through the NRA, it's written by Lloyds of London.
Okay. Anything else?
No. Any court members got any questions?
Yeah, I have a question or two. It's a typical deal we run into. I mean, once again, we get handed a book of laws by people that's in Austin starting today that don't take any consideration for ones that have to live with them, and that's us. So my question is, Commissioner Dever asked about the liability, but we hear horror stories all the time about stray bullets. You know, Texas Motor Speedway had one a few years ago. But what's the largest caliber rifle you'll let shoot out there? And then what's the, what's the travel distance of a 22?
22-long rifle on a 30 to 40-degree angle can travel approximately a mile.
Okay.
We're going to, I'm, what I'm proposing out there at my range is any caliber up to, but not including 50 caliber. There will be no 50 calibers. I'm also proposing on the rifle range, there will not be any full-metal jacket ammo. Full-metal jacket ammo, if anybody knows what that is, it has a horrible tendency to tumble and ricochet, and, you know, so it will be soft point or hollow point ammo only on the rifle range, so that way, when it does strike something, its energy's expelled.
What I heard Commissioner Dever's concerns yesterday was the noise, but you know, they're worried about their quality of life, but what's your hours of operation and, I mean, what will you do? Obviously, when the gas well business came in, we had to buy a decimal reader because of the decimal noise, and the sheriff's department made many calls checking out noise levels on compressors. When, if we have no stance at our level, but the sheriff has got to administer the law by noise, which is going to be one shot every so often, it's going to be hard to follow letter of the law, but what's your hours of operation that will affect people's livelihoods and their quality of life?
What we're proposing, and this has changed since last week, last week, I think I basically told everyone that it would be 9:00 AM to 6:00 PM, Tuesday through Saturday, and we had originally proposed being open on Sundays, 12:00 PM to 6:00 PM. We have thought about that, and actually, I'm going to need more time, you know, days that it is closed down to do maintenance, you know, replacing, you know, just everything that's going to be going on out there. So now, my new proposal is the same time, 9:00 AM to 6:00 PM, Tuesday through Saturday, but we will be closed on Sunday and Monday. And we also propose that in the months of June, July, and August, to where it gets blistering hot at 10:00 AM in the morning, proposing during those three months, open up at 8:00 AM instead of the 9:00 AM. That way, people can come out, get their shooting over with, and be back in before it gets real, real hot.
Does anybody else have anything for Mr. Kirkandall? All right. Thank you very much.
Thank you all.
Mr. Lenny? Are, is a, are we ready to proceed on this, or you say you're still waiting on something?
Yes, we're still waiting on the design of the modification to the OSSF facility.
Judge, I'd like to make a motion. We table this until that has been properly presented to the court.
All right. I have a motion made by Commissioner Dever that we table this until all of that is complete. Do you have a second?
Second.
Seconded by Commissioner Taut. Any further discussion? And then the motion, I'll accept question on the motion to table the 5K gun range.
What are we missing on the, on the septic is the application for modification permit, and that has not been presented yet, right?
That's correct. I'll need to have a formal application designed by either sanitary or engineer and then decide approval through the department.
Yes.
I'll put it down somewhere that the department obtained it.
And it'll be, if we put back on the agenda and come back like we are today, is that correct, Don?
Yes, sir. It'll still be a public hearing. We haven't closed this one. We're tableled until.
Okay. Then the public hearing is now tabled, oh, no, all in favor of tabling it? Aye. Opposed? Motion carried. Thank you all very much for your comments. Budget and finance, consider budget line item amendments?
Good morning, Judge. We have no amendments today.
All right. Next is ratify paying the bills.
Judge and Commissioners, the bills for your consideration today come to a total of $310,194.14. Some of the larger items, on the first page you'd see Ben E. Keith Company, $21,971.45 for jail groceries. Then to Charter Communications, $16,000, pardon me, $16,710 for telecommunications and data services. To the city of Granbury, $38,114.76 for utilities. And then of note is a slight decline in the U.S. Bank National Association payment of $26,080.09. This is for purchases on the fuel card. I think we're going to enjoy at least a brief decline in the cost of fuel for county vehicles, but we request your permission to pay these bills.
All right. Entertained a motion to ratify paying the bills?
There's a check in there that's going to be for the EDC, Judge. Item number six, when we get down to talk about item six, where we've decided to get out, and after city council meeting last week, where they wanted their money back for the second quarter, that I'd like to hold a check for January until we, until the EDC board itself works out the fundamentals of that. So before we, I'll make the motion, we ratify paying the bills, with the exception of the check, we're going to discuss in six. When we cancel the $25,000, we're going to pay that 8333, I believe.
And this is because the bylaws of the EDC says that both city and county will put in the same amount of money, so if they have pulled their money back, we cannot, because of the bylaws of the Economic Development Corporation, we cannot issue that check, because we'd be in violation of the bylaws of that. So I have a motion made by Commissioner Barry to approve paying, or ratify paying the bills, with the exception of the check to the EDC. Do you have any further discussion? Or have a second?
Second.
Motion made by Commissioner Barry, seconded by Commissioner Dever. Further discussion? All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Motion carried. Thank you very much. Stand. Miscellaneous, consider presentation of fourth quarter county attorney report card.
Hi, Judges and Commissioner. I'd like to actually start on page eight of my yearly presentation in 2014, just to kind of show you, give you an assessment of what the activity in my office looks like. Constitutionally, I am required to, charged with representing the state of Texas in all criminal prosecutions, and if you look on page eight, since that's my primary function, that graph represents that. We had 1,405 new cases that were filed in 2014 that were A and B misdemeanors and C, Class C appeals. The other types of cases that are on that particular graph, can we go to page eight? Keep going. There you go. You can see that Class A and B misdemeanor and C appeals, that is the majority of the cases that we handle. All of the rest of the cases, as Commissioner Barry pointed out, the legislature likes to give additional duties and additional requirements. Those are required by statute for me to represent folks. The only one that is not by statute is occupational driver's licenses, and I, I review those for Judge Messina and the four JPs as a courtesy to help them in their offices. If you look back at, so I had a total of 1,405 of If you look back at, so I had a total of 1,405 of criminal cases, that new cases that we filed, and a total of 1,633 of all of my types of cases. If there are any questions about any of the, the other charts that are in there, I'd be happy to answer any questions that you have.
I'd like to say I really appreciate these reports that you come and bring to us. It's a lot of good information. It's also good information for the citizens to, to see how, how well you're operating your, your department.
Thank you. I know that the court is particularly interested in the fines and fees that are assessed because of those criminal cases. And as you can see from page three, the total assessed that was to the county was $1,155,985.70 in 2014.
Commissioners are always interested in money.
I know, I know you are. I know you are.
Casper, can you, when you talked about how the, we talked about last quarter when you were here about the DWI arrangement that we talked about with Jackie and IT and you...
We're still working on that. We've not worked out all the bugs in the system. And we've got to get, as I pointed out to Jackie, we really need to get, even though this is a county-funded project, we are, hopefully, we can use this search warrant program with the DPS and the Granbury Police Department cases as well, because those ultimately affect the county. So we need to get all three of the agencies on board with the format that we're using for that, and we're working on that.
Anybody have any other questions for the county attorney? Then I'll entertain a motion to approve the report card.
So moved.
Motion made by Commissioner Dever. Do I have a second?
Second.
Seconded by Commissioner Taut. Any further discussion? And all in favor? Aye. Opposed? Motion carried. Thank you very much. Consider and take appropriate action regarding appointments and reappointments to the Development Commission.
Judge Cockrum, commissioners, I, I don't know why this is on the agenda. Our plans were to have it on next meeting when Butch was present.
All right. Entertain a motion to table it until all the commissioners can be here.
So moved.
Motion made by Commissioner Taut. Do I have a second?
Second.
Seconded by Commissioner Berry. Commissioner Berry's got the flu or something. That's the reason he's not talking much. He's, so...
Thanks for pointing that out.
All right. Any further discussion?
Thank God.
All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Motion carried. Consider and take appropriate action regarding the request for approval of a district clerk employee going from full, full-time to part-time position and salary approval as well.
Good morning.
Ms. Hitt?
I will be taking my functional analyst from a full-time to a part-time position. And I was asked to come to court to get that approved.
Does this will be a savings to the county?
It will. You will not have to pay the somewhat $15,000 in benefits to her. She'll be working 24 hours a week, and we will be using the salary she has now, just dividing it hourly out.
Same salary, just less hours and more benefits.
And the court and the citizens appreciate that.
That's why we, she called me about Thanksgiving and wanted to put this on the agenda, or wanted to work through this. She, her employee wants to work but doesn't want to work full-time or whatever the situation, but she didn't want to lose her. So because it's a mid-budget item is why we brought it to court, so that she can basically take her, because it's, there's really not a set policy for this type of situation. But she's going to take a full-time position, transfer it into a part-time, and then reevaluate it, obviously, during budget time in the summer, Judge. So right now, that's, that's how she wants to try to handle it.
We have a number of, I don't know if we can discuss what she was making, what she will be making.
Well, the number that I talked to Ms. Hitt before court was, she's going to, she's already worked with the first assistant in HR about just going hourly, and they've taken what she's made minus the benefits and broke it down to an hourly rate.
Okay.
Okay? So that's why she came to court, to know that, you know, she's not trying to add a position or take, she just wants to basically reduce one from full-time to part-time, not to go over the 24 hours, not to get into the Affordable Care Act issue. And so that's...
One more question. You won't be asking for another employee to replace her?
No.
Okay.
No.
Okay. I'll entertain a motion to approve this request.
So moved.
Motion made by Commissioner Berry. Do I have a second?
Second.
Seconded by Commissioner Dever. Any further discussion?
Just that she allows, we allow her to work this out with HR and the auditor and treasurer, and we get this worked out so they can handle it for payroll purposes.
Okay. If there's no further discussion, all in favor? Aye. Opposed? Motion carried. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Next item is consider and take appropriate action regarding a request to use the gazebo for the annual Bible reading marathon. I have a letter from Mike Mahan.
Mayan.
Would you like to come up and address the commissioners?
Well, I'm not sure exactly what it is that you all have in mind, but I'm willing to answer any questions you have about what we're doing, why we do it, and so on.
Let me, let me do a little preface here. We really like for, there has been conflict in the past on the gazebo. And, and what I mean conflict is conflict on reservations, not what's going on down there. But, so we like for people to schedule so that there won't be two events scheduled at the same time.
Yes, sir.
And so that's the reason that we, we like these. I'd hate for somebody to just, you know, go down there and somebody else already be there because they made a reservation and the other group didn't. So that's the reason you're coming. Does anybody have any questions for Mr. Mayan?
Well, the funny, that's not funny, but it is. But we did have a conflict. The Bible marathon was going on during the wine walk, okay? So they were both using the gazebo. And that's what the judge is saying, is we're just trying to find the checks and balances. It's not, and so everything needs to come through. We had, something happened a couple of weeks ago at the gazebo that nobody knew about for liability purposes and scheduling purposes. He does, he and Judge Tuggle do weddings in the gazebo occasionally as well. So that's all this is really about.
Okay. Well, now, with, as far as the wine walk goes, about two or three years ago, we did have that situation arise. And after I met with Ken Hackett, Ken went before the board or whoever the leaders are of the wine walk, and they agreed that the Bible reading marathon should take place and so on. And in fact, just as recently as last Wednesday, in talking with Ken again, he mentioned that, and he said, "We will always defer to the Bible reading marathon." And I said, "Okay, that is great." And so that should not present a problem. By the way, they did also ask us to acknowledge the wine walk that particular year, and we had a sign right out in front of the gazebo welcoming wine walkers and inviting them to come and read the Bible if they wanted to. And we had a couple. We were not being facetious there, but we, we had a couple.
Well, you know, if Jesus turned water into wine, I mean...
Amen. That's right.
So I'll make a motion. We accept his request.
Well, I have, Rich Land, do you want to speak on? Okay. I have a motion made by Commissioner Berry to allow, to reserve the gazebo for the annual Bible reading marathon in April. Do I have it seconded by Commissioner Dever? Any further discussion? And all in favor? Aye. Opposed? Thank you very much.
You, sir.
All right. Next is consider and take appropriate action regarding a resolution supporting the display of the national motto in "God We Trust" in the Hood County meeting rooms. And let me read this to you. I'm the one that put it on, on the agenda to do that, because I am definitely in support of our national motto. And it says, "Support and display the national motto in 'God We Trust,' a resolution of the Commissioners' Court of Hood County, Texas, supporting the display of the national motto in 'God We Trust' prominently on Hood County property, whereas 'In God We Trust' became the national motto on July 30, 1956, shortly after our nation led the world through the trauma of World War II. And whereas the words have been used on U.S. currency since 1864, and whereas the same inspiring slogan and engraving above the entrance of the Senate chamber, as well as above the Speaker's diocese and the House of Representatives, and whereas Hood County, Texas desires to display this patriotic motto on the country, on the county property as a way to solemnize public occasions and to express confidence in our society. Now therefore, be it resolved that the Commissioners' Court of Hood County, Texas, does hereby determine that these historic and patriotic words of our national motto in "God We Trust" shall be permanently and prominently displayed on Hood County property." Now, there has been a question about separation of church and state, and I think if it's in the Senate of the United States of America, and if it's in the House of Representatives of the United States of America, and Jeff Taut said he'd be glad to take any of your money that you don't want with that slogan on there. So, you know, because it's on all of those, I propose this resolution.
Judge, that's, that's what our nation's been developed under, "In God We Trust," one nation under God. And I'd like to make the motion to go...
I have some, I'll, I'll, I'll take that motion, but I, Rich Land, do you want to speak on this?
Come back to me. Pass.
You're going to pass again? Okay. Then Margaret, do you, are you, do you want to speak?
Well, it sounds like if everybody's for it, we're going to go, then I won't.
Well, I can't, I can't, you can come up and talk. I can't, I mean, the motion's been made. I don't know what, how the vote's going to go yet.
All I'd like to say is that we moved here about 20 years ago, and Granbury has been a fantastic place to live. It's been a place that, as you've heard many times, you can raise your children and, and hope for a much better outcome than you would maybe in the metroplex. But the freedom of religion has been especially known here in Granbury, in small towns, and not been a big deal of being questioned. We have a parade after Thanksgiving, which I've had relatives come to who were just awestruck that it was a Christian parade. The entire parade was a Christian parade. And it's something to be proud of. I was shocked that that question was even coming, you know, for us to address. I didn't understand why. But I definitely wanted to be here if there was, it was going to be in jeopardy, because I am certainly all for keeping "In God We Trust." That's all.
Okay.
There's a, there's an organization, if you'll Google "In God We Trust." This resolution went to the Texas Association of Counties, to all 254 counties. Hamilton County did it yesterday at their Commissioners' Court. But if you will Google that, I believe, I Googled it last night at home, there's a, there is a nationwide push by this organization to get every state and every county and every municipality and every governmental entity in the country to adopt this resolution. And they're doing this because, number one, our, our session starts today in Austin, okay? I mean, legislators are going back in Austin today, senators and state reps. But they're doing this, and so Monday, a lot of courts meet, on Tuesdays, a lot of courts meet. But yesterday, Hamilton County did it, and the week before, you, you sent the email out.
Walker County.
Walker County did it.
And Oldham County.
So it's, it's, it's going across the state. What happens is we get resolutions sent out by different organizations at certain times of the year. Okay? Right after Christmas, or New Year, new sessions are starting, and this one came across. No one put this, no, no one court member put this on the agenda, and no one's taking anything off the water tower or anything in town, okay? That's not what this is about. This is a resolution, we, if you'll watch court, we pass three or four resolutions like city council does almost weekly. Some have to do with the Daughters of American Revolution. Some may have to do with somebody's basketball wins at the high school. But this is a pretty prominent issue that obviously, we got to work yesterday, and our emails were blowing up. People thought we were taking it out of Judge Walton's courtroom. I wouldn't want to be the one to try to take it out of Judge Walton's courtroom, okay?
I agree. I agree with that.
Okay.
But is there an organization that is going around, you know, blocking this other one? Or we having, is each town trying to do this separately?
They're, they're doing it separately. And I haven't heard of anybody that's trying to block it. I, I don't know where, Steve called me about that and said, "I don't know where that came from."
There, there is a group out there that, I mean, and I don't know where, I don't know the name of the group, I don't know anything, but there's groups of people that, that, you know, I, we had calls yesterday. Okay? But that's not what this is about this morning. I don't, I mean, it's just the resolution and, and it's like, you've already heard appeal on the diocese, it's not a contested issue with us.
Okay. Thank you so much.
Thank you. I would have said your last name, but I don't think I could pronounce it, so...
That's all right.
All right. Then I will, y'all have all heard it read. If there's anybody else that would, I know you didn't fill out a form. Julia, you did fill out one, didn't you? Yeah, come on up.
Thank you, Judge and commissioners. Well, after I heard your resolution, I'm taking a few of my things off what I had to say. I would like to say a little history, just for your information. In 2003, when Governor Perry first sent out his declaration that House Bill 21 would allow the schools, all the libraries, all the classrooms to appropriately display "In God We Trust," this is how our county, your county, felt about that. I went before the Board of Education, they approved it, their attorney checked it out. Within one week's time, because it says that the money spent on those displays had to come from citizens. I don't know what yours says, but that's what it said for that. In one week's time, this community raised the funds to buy the appropriate posters. We framed them ourselves, we boxed them up, sent them to the schools after we prayed over them. And to this day, 11 years later, you can go into most schools, the administration office, I still have that packet and all that information. So if I can help the county in any way with that, I would be glad to. I just want to finish with this. This is my personal research, that you mentioned church and separation. I found no place in the Constitution where that phrase is used. The original framers did not want a right of anyone to form an official state church like England did. That's what they fought against. And we have to be careful interpretation of words. Nice at one time meant foolish. We use it today, it means something good. The phrase is not used. Therefore, we need to understand that when it was first implemented, it was intended to only limit the federal government, not the state government. And I found it interesting that in Article 1, Section 7, when the president was to return a bill back to the House or Congress or Senate, he had only so many days, and it said Sundays accepted, not Saturdays or Fridays when other forms of worship, had their worship, but Sundays. So that was a reference to the Christian or Protestant Day. It closes, "Done in convention and by unanimous consent of the states present, 17th Day of September in the year of our Lord." So regardless of how they individually may have thought, they were unanimous in signing that. There are allusions to being good students of interpretation, to not incorrectly interpret any document, whether it's the Bible, the Constitution, or the Declaration of Independence. So therefore, I applaud you, encourage you, and support you to let us in Granbury not be made or make the Constitution mean something it doesn't, nor bring fear upon ourselves if we dare to believe what our forefathers believed, "In God We Trust." Thank you.
Thank you, Julia. Then I'll entertain a motion to approve this resolution or adopt this resolution.
I thought, I thought James did.
James already did. Yeah, okay.
I'll second.
Okay. Motion made by Commissioner Dever and seconded by Commissioner Berry. Any further discussion? All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Motion carried. Thank you all very much. And thank everybody that spoke on this. Thank you, Julia, for that. Consider and take appropriate action to officially allow the county treasurer's office to void check 256035 in the amount of $25,000 dated 12/22/14 and remit the correct amount due. And of course, we've already addressed that, we pulled that off. So do we need to do this? Yeah, we need to do the, the first part of it. I'll entertain a motion to, to void that, that check 256035, the amount of $25,000.
So moved.
Motion made by Commissioner Taut. Do I have a second? Do I have a second?
Second.
Seconded by Commissioner Berry. Any further discussion? Then all in favor? Aye, opposed? I'd like to, you know, what, I made that statement when we did this, that we were going in two different directions, I thought, the, because, you know, the city has been pretty much going after retail for, and commercial, and we were chasing more light manufacturing and manufacturing. And yesterday, we worked with a company to build a $750 million plant within the county that will, as a part of economic development for the county. So people who say we're not interested in it, I don't know where that comes from, because we're definitely interested in economic development. And it's just that we are, we were more interested in creating jobs, manufacturing, well-paying jobs rather than retail. Anyway, so, have we taken a vote on that yet? I can't even remember now, made that statement.
Did we? Did we vote on it?
Yes.
Yes, we did.
We did, okay. Convene into executive session per government code 551.074 to consider and discuss personnel matters. And I believe that they're having court over here, so we're going to have to go over here. Is that right, Sheriff?
We're going to executive session?
We're going into executive session.